Westboro TV is here. Westboro TV, are you ready?
Yeah.
John, if you can just wait one more minute, just because I know most people hopefully saw the notice on the website and everything. But just in case they wanted to stop by town hall and they saw the notice on the door. But I've heard it's pretty nasty out there.
This is the December 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Westboro Planning Board. My name is John Gelsic, Vice Chair. Before we begin, I need to read the required remote meeting notice. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting is being conducted via remote participation. The public may access the meeting using the Microsoft Teams link posted on the agenda and the planning board webpage. If we experience technical difficulties that prevent adequate public access. We will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the planning board's website as soon as possible after the meeting. At this point, I'd like to also take attendance. So Hazel, can you confirm you're here back from a bit of a health scare, if you don't mind me saying? Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Caroline Regan?
I'm here.
Christina Keller?
Present.
And John Pizoni?
Here.
Thank you. And John Gelsic is here. And are we going to move to the first application Jenny, or is there something you need to do between now and then?
Um, I know you can move to the continuances if you want.
Sure. So we have the 50 Flanders Road for the subdivision. And they are requesting a continuation to December 16th. Is there anything we need to hear about this, or can we just vote on the continuation?
Uh, no, I mean, I added in my memo what the reasoning for it. So we're just basically that we're waiting for a response to the peer review. Comments from the applicant. We did meet with them to go over the comments. So hopefully we'll have everything ready for the December 16th meeting date.
Great. I'd like to entertain a motion to move the planning board, or sorry, to reschedule. To continue the hearing for 50 Flanders Road until December 16th, 2025.
So moved.
So I've got John on the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, Chris on the second, and we have to do a voice, sorry, a roll call vote since we're remote. So I'll just go in order of how you're on my screen. Hazel?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So that is five to zero continued to December 16th. All right. And the next one?
John, can I? Sorry to interrupt. I got a message from Westboro TV that they're set to go live. I just want to make sure that they can hear us here. Cause I thought we were live. Um, Westboro TV, can you hear us? Oh, they unmuted.
They raised their hand.
Oh. And it went away.
Rest of our TV, can you thumbs up with the reactions if it's okay? You're raising your hand. I don't know what that means.
Yeah, they they have the ability to unmute.
Looks like they're unmuted.
Well, maybe the microphone's not working.
Let's put it in the chat.
Chat.
I think the chat's off.
Oh, that would make sense.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like they can at least hear us.
Yeah.
If they're responding.
This call is being recorded too. So in case there's an issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Should we continue?
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's all right. All right. So the next hearing is for, pull it up. 165 Flanders Road. It looks like the update is. That there's some still, the feedback was provided. But Bowler is projecting it will take at least a month for new test pit data collection with revised plans of store bar analysis expected in late January, early February. And so they have asked for a continuation to the February 3rd, 2026 meeting.
John, I had one question. Point of information on that. Jenny, in your summary on the second page, top of it. You said the applicant withdrew the original application in 2025 due to a lack of quorum with the planning board.
Right.
I've never held a meeting without a quorum.
It was, no, it was because you all had opened it in 2021, I think, even before I was with the board. And then because of the turnover on the board, you didn't have enough of the original members. To even make three people, it would have only been you Hazel and. Um, it right Mark, but he went off, but I can't remember if it was you, John Pizoni, or you.
I I would have been on it.
Okay, then. Yeah. So it was just two of you on the original. So they had to withdraw. Because they, you can't make a decision with only two members.
No, I I see that, but it just, as I said, the wording was strange. I've never seen that wording. So I just.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Like to entertain a motion to continue the hearing for 165 Flanders Road until February 3rd, 2026.
So moved.
John Pizoni with the motion. A second?
Second.
Chris?
Second.
All right. Hazel, your vote.
Yes, to continue.
Caroline?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And John Gelsic is a yes. That's five to zero. So that hearing has been continued to February 3rd, 2026. All right. Now I have something else I need to read. Let me open that up. All right. So this is for the new application for Post Road. In accordance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Sections 3.0 and 6.2 of the Town of Westboro zoning bylaw. I will now open the public hearing on the two applications filed by Post Road Realty LLC. For a special permit and full site plan review for two multifamily developments located at 171 Milk Street. 221 Turnpike Road and 223 Turnpike Road, referred to as the North Parcel, proposed for 206 residential units. And 222 Turnpike Road, referred to as the South Parcel, proposed for 182 residential units. All properties are located in the Highway Business Zoning District. I invite the applicant or their representative to present the project at this time. Do we have the applicant?
Uh, yes, it would be, um, Tom Montelli, and then I know he has a team of, uh, his development team here. So.
And Andy.
He can let us know.
Right.
And Tom, you should be able to unmute yourself.
And then Jenny and John, it looks like Westboro TV has their hand up again.
I think it was just still.
Oh, it was. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm letting some of, um, his team come on. Um, and then I just wanted to mention to the board that I did. Have a pretty detailed memo on this. So if you want me to go over any of it, I can, but you should all have a copy.
Yeah, I think we'll let the team present and then we can get your feedback Jenny, then we can go to questions.
Okay, I'm just allowing everybody to unmute.
Are they able to share their screen if they have a presentation?
Uh, yes, they can. Um, it's saying, um, Tom can't unmute.
Jenny, uh, this is Dan from IC. I'm just gonna allow everyone to unmute.
Okay.
In the, in the chat, I think I went a little bit overboard trying to, uh, keep control on the meeting. I wasn't sure what it entailed. So, you know.
Oh, okay.
Kind of do it together like that. So I think everyone at this point should be able to unmute themselves, share their screen and turn on a camera.
Okay.
I'll stick around in case we, uh, have other issues.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. It sounds like the app wasn't working for some people. It had to be the browser.
Yeah, that could be a number of things. I don't think I'm going to be able to troubleshoot that much remotely.
Oh, no, I don't expect that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay. Hmm. So Tom says he can't get off mute. And others can't either.
Jenny, this is Sealan. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you, Sealan.
So I'm good. Thank you.
Let's start with my phone.
I guess if you can't unmute, you might have to log out and log back in.
Jenny, this is Andy Montelli. We're, uh, trying to, trying to fix Tom's laptop and get this working because he has the presentation loaded on it. So just give us a minute if you don't mind, please. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I think he has a MacBook also, which could be the issue.
That, that has been, that's been my issues because I've got a MacBook and it, the Microsoft program does not like it.
Is anyone else having an issue on that team? Brian, I, I know you had your hand raised.
Oh, no, I, I, my hand was raised because I was having an issue, but it's been resolved, assuming you can hear me.
Oh, okay. I agree.
And my, this is Eric Rains. Unfortunately, my account says Elizabeth, but I was able to exit and come back in and then it worked.
Okay, great. And I would just ask for the audience members, if you can just keep your, um, microphone muted and until it's time for public, um, comment. And then just use the raise hand feature so the chair can call on you.
There's some feedback. I don't know if anyone else is hearing feedback.
Yeah.
Now that we've got more people unmuted, I would say, I don't know if anyone's in the same room, but just making sure only one person, um, has their mic on.
Yeah, absolutely. It went away, so.
Yeah, or maybe just keep it muted when you're not speaking. I think it might be yours, um, Sealan.
I thought it was, let me take, no, I'm muted on my phone.
You're muted on your phone.
Trying to get. Sorry. Give us a minute, Jenny. We're trying to get Thomas, uh, I'm stuck. It's a, it's a MacBook. So maybe that's part of, he's got Hazel's problem too, maybe.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can hear you. Oof.
Sorry about that, everybody. Okay, so Jenny, I heard, um, that we could start. Would you like to share the screen with me so I can share the, the presentation deck?
Yeah, you should, you should be able to, to share.
Okay.
That should be on the top right.
Let's see.
There you go.
Okay, can everybody see this?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have an echo. I'm not sure why.
Let's try one more thing.
I think it was, no, I think it was Sealan's. I just, I just muted you. Sorry. I don't know if you're, I know you said you're muted on the phone, but yeah, coming through. Cool. Thank you.
Okay, there, no, no echo now.
Well, did we lose Tom again?
I see his mouse moving.
Sorry, are you able to hear me now?
I can hear you speaking.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Um, so I was gonna kick things off. I'm Attorney Brian Falk with Myrick. Office at 1800 West Park Drive in Westboro here on behalf of Post Road Realty LLC, the applicant. Post Road is excited to bring forward this application for two multifamily communities at the corners of Milk Street and Route 9. Uh, the sites are located in the Highway Business Zoning District, which was amended by Town Meeting last year. To encourage flexible development and flexible design and to encourage quality housing options. Under the Highway Business Zoning, the, this project requires a special permit and site plan approval from the planning board. Post Road Residential has developed several high-quality multifamily communities in Massachusetts, close to Boston, and also close to Westboro, up the road in Marlboro. I, I had the privilege of representing Post Road on the Green District project in Marlboro. If you haven't had a chance to tour those buildings, the borough and the lodge, I would encourage you to do so. You'll see that Post Road is the kind of developer you want to have in town. Post Road overdelivers with high-quality construction and amenities that make their residents and their communities proud. We have, as you see, a few project team members here tonight for our initial presentation. Uh, another nice aspect of working with Post Road is that they have great relationships with their permitting, design, and construction teams. I've worked with many of these same folks up the road in Marlboro, the Green District, and it's a great team. So just going through the role real quick from, from Benfield Architecture, we're going to hear from Sealan Pather. We have Joe Peznola, our Civil Engineer from Hancock Associates. We have Bob Micho from MDM Transportation, our traffic consultant. And we have Eric Rains from Eric Rains Landscape Architecture. First up on the team tonight is Tom Montelli, Partner at Post Road Residential. Tom?
Thank you. Brian, can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay. Uh, thank you, Brian. Uh, my name is Tom Montelli. Uh, I'm a partner at Post Road Residential. Uh, and, and just want to make brief introductions to, uh, the folks from our team that are on the call joining us. Uh, my father, Andrew Montelli, um, as well as many of our, uh, design and engineering professionals that Brian just introduced. I also want to thank, uh, the planning board and the planning staff. I can't tell you how much we appreciate the time and the effort, um, that you've put forth in, um, meeting with us. Having collaborative discussions, um, and, and working through this process. It's been, um, informative. And, um, I just want to thank you for all your time and effort. We're going to try to make this presentation informative, uh, yet succinct, understanding that there are some, uh, design and engineering professionals that are. Going to be presenting, uh, brief, briefly after myself, uh, and acknowledging that we want to leave, uh, ample time after the presentation for more detailed question and answer. Can everybody confirm, or Brian, can you confirm that you see the slide changed?
This is Tom. Tom, share your screen again.
All right. Not seeing the slide deck right now, but I need to reshare.
Okay, how, how about now, everybody?
I can see it now.
Okay.
You might just want to put it in presentation mode, Tom. That's all.
Did that get us there? I'm sorry about this.
Uh, it's still in the edit format.
All right. Well, if this is large enough to view, um, is it at least, is it visible to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So quickly, I just want to go over a few things. And the first thing is who we are. Post Road Residential, we're a boutique multifamily housing developer. And our offices are located in Fairfield, Connecticut. However, the majority of our work is in the metro Boston area. In the context of the housing development world, we sort of pride ourselves on having a unique business model. Traditionally, the housing development market is usually dominated by large national institutional development companies. And the reason that is traditionally is because it's a very capital-y intense business. And as a result, those big national companies have an inherent business model that, uh, focus on scalable production. In order to increase productivity across a large business. Now, from an economic standpoint, that business model might make sense, but when it comes, um, when, when, when you think about that business model in the context of housing design, um, and housing development. The issue is that, that model of production really produces homogenous design. So what that means is, for example, if there was a project in Westboro, Massachusetts, developed by a large national company. It might look identical to a project of theirs in Dallas, Texas, or San Diego, California. When my father, Andrew, started the company, uh, 15 years ago, we really sought to break that mold of that traditional business model. He had spent his entire career previously working for those large companies. And he'll tell you, the reason he started it was actually out of embarrassment. He was embarrassed to take my mother around to the various projects that he had developed. But in addition, and maybe more important to that anecdote. What we found is that the customers that we serve and the customers who live in our building. Really want to feel a unique sense of pride and connection to where they live. And we thought if they love their Apple products or any other consumer product because of the way it makes them feel and the experiences associated with that. Why shouldn't they feel the same way about where they live? And in thinking along those lines, as we developed our sort of business model. We came up with a, a business motto, and that is quality over quantity. And what that really means is we try to pay more attention and are afforded the time to. To what we call the, the software and the hardware of our business. And what that means is how, how can we think about where we're developing? The history of that community and how can we integrate that into things like branding and design and marketing? And, and, and we feel like customers really appreciate that. They want to feel like, um, they have a unique sense of community where they live. Uh, and here's an example of a project that many of you have, have toured that really. Signifies how that software side of our business thinking, uh, plays in, into a, a community of ours. This is a project. In the Green District in Marlboro, Massachusetts called The Lodge, where the site was formerly a forest. And what we tried to do is, is think about how we can pay homage to that site. We used a ton of reclaimed wood throughout the project. We integrated the concept of handsaws and wood, not only on. Custom brass door handles throughout the community. So people really immediately. So people really immediately, when they walk into one of our communities, understand what the branding message is, what the software side of the equation is. And then it flows through the hardware, the building, the design, in the various spaces throughout the building. So in general, the idea of quality over quantity means we develop much fewer communities, but we invest our own money when we do it, and we try to execute with a much more thoughtful approach. And in the end, we pride ourselves on doing what we say. And our hope is that we become long-term partners in the communities we develop and invest in. Next, I want to go over quickly a project overview. As many of you know, the subject property is located on the corners of Route 9 and Milk Street. The north parcel is what we anticipate developing first. And the south parcel would begin construction right as construction ends on the north parcel. To put some timelines on that, hopefully, the first phase, the north parcel, is under construction sometime in the fall of '26. That construction would wrap up in the summer of '28. And as that construction wraps up, a few months before, maybe in the spring of '28, construction would begin on the south parcel. Both projects would be fully occupied sometime in the fall of 2030. The project will include 15% of its units as affordable units across different AMI levels, and it will include various sustainable design measures. One of the things that we're very proud of and think highly of in terms of this project is the way that it responds to what we believe are important town planning documents. And those are the Housing Production Plan and the Master Plan. When we reviewed those, it seemed like there were some very common themes throughout them. Those were that new housing should be located along major commercial corridors like Route 9. It should be focused in areas with underutilized parcels or vacant land, focused in areas where there is limited environmental impact, in areas where infrastructure is already in place, and in locations where the project is proximate to business district to support local economic goals. And we firmly believe that this proposal answers and responds to a lot of those themes that were documented in those town planning docs. One thing I want to touch on is the differences in this project versus the existing housing stock in Westboro. The main theme in terms of the existing housing stock in Westboro is that 81% of it was built in the two-decade period between 1980 and 1999. Our project, obviously, a new, more modern multifamily community, is going to have some real stark differences to that of the existing housing stock in Westboro. That is, first, that the majority of our unit types are smaller unit types. Studio, one-bedroom units, roughly 60% of both projects will be as such. And overall, the square footage of the individual units on average in our project are about 15% to 20% smaller than the existing apartment communities in Westboro. One other important difference is the way that our company, when one of our projects are built and we start leasing, is we partner with a blue-chip institutional management company. That is a company that specializes solely in managing the day-to-day operations and the leasing of our communities. And what that means is there is very strict leasing guidelines and occupancy controls. So there will be no opportunity to have occupancy cramming in our buildings. And those are very important partners of ours and are integrally important to the day-to-day vibrancy of our communities. The next thing I want to touch on, as we kind of wrap up the project overview, is our opinion of who the customer is for this project. I think whatever business you're in, understanding who your customer is is extremely important. And for us, we kind of design for those consumption preferences. It's clear from the planning documents, such as the Housing Production Plan, that nearly 60% of the population in town is made up of the three youngest demographic groups. That is the millennial generation, Generation Z, and Generation Alpha. Those are folks that are currently around 44 years old and younger. And why that's important is...
I've got it turned off.
Why that's important is that there are a tremendous amount of jobs nearby this site. And that's obviously synergistic with, you know, that demographic who lives in town, who will be working and living in this community. Within a 10-mile radius of this project, there are 250,000 jobs. And within a 15-mile radius, there are 400,000 jobs. And the employment base is diverse, but some of the most prominent are in science and technology, healthcare, and commercial businesses. Just a few miles to the west of our site is the UMass Chan Medical Campus, where there are nearly 15,000 to 20,000 jobs. So we believe our customer in this building is going to be that individual who works in the Metro West community. And if we had to guess, I would say 75% of our customer base will most likely be those younger demographic groups that I had mentioned, with maybe 15% to 20% being retirees, downsizing baby boomers, folks who are looking for high-quality, safe, and convenient living. Last slide, talking about project overview, because we feel passionately about this. And this has to do with the, you know, the software side of our business and how we think about designing our communities. Early on, we found this great book by a Westboro native named Philip Kedrich. And this book, which is called Images of America: Westboro, pays homage to the historical culture and beautiful architecture that much of Westboro has. And our plan, we really took away two points in studying this book. Number one, we are going to take, and you will see when Sealan from Beinfield presents, we are taking our design cues from the historical architecture in Westboro. And the other aspect that we really think is interesting is as future development potentially continues in the Route 9 corridor, there's not a reason why design connections or fabrics can't be made between downtown Westboro and Route 9. They're obviously separate, but you can start creating these different connections to create somewhat of a unifying pattern as future growth and development goes on. Lastly, the last thing I just wanted to talk about is a brief overview of community benefits associated with this project. First, fiscal benefits. This project will have a very large net fiscal benefit to the community. The project will also have a minimally negative impact on the Westboro school systems. I know that's going to be a topic of discussion, and we look forward to having that in the Q&amp;A session afterwards, but we feel very strongly about that. There are very important infrastructure benefits associated with this project. Joe Peznola, our civil engineer, will talk about some of them, but at a high level, stormwater and drainage will greatly improve in the post-development conditions versus the current existing conditions. We're going to be paying nearly a million and a half dollars to the DPW for infrastructure fees. And it is worth saying, we're happy doing that. This project is a fully self-mitigating project. So we feel like those, that large fee is going to be beneficial to the town, the DPW, and the engineering department. And one last infrastructure benefit is, I think I heard Jenny mention this, but there's this sort of perfect storm of a potential partnership with our project and the community. The goal is, once we start, if we're lucky enough to get through approvals, once we start the first project, in between the time of the first project and the second project beginning, we would pursue this state infrastructure grant for the identified infrastructure improvements that Westboro has identified along Milk Street. Those state infrastructure grants that we and our consultants have a lot of experience with, as does the town of Westboro, really requires two things. Number one, a municipality who has identified a real infrastructure need. And number two, a private housing development adjacent to that project that would also benefit from that project. So we look forward to continuing those conversations. And then social and housing benefits, we are going to be, again, responding to those important planning documents by increasing the housing stock diversity, increasing the number of affordable units in town, and doing so sustainably with sustainable design measures. We believe that the customers who will live in this building are going to have reasonably high disposable incomes as well. So there should be a trickle-down effect locally for local commerce and business as those folks patron the community. And planning benefits, I won't touch on it again, but we believe that this, there was two points here I wanted to make. One, that we're happy and proud that this project is responsive to those important planning documents locally. But it's also fair to note that it's responsive to the Governor Healy's 2025 Comprehensive Housing Plan. So with that, thank you. And I'd like to hand off the presentation to our architect, Sealan Pather of Beinfield Architecture. And I will stop my screen share, Sealan.
Tom, can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Sorry. So just a quick question, just for some clarity on the slide that you had about the the population. Was that of, you said it was like our customer? Was that for, were those percentages our town or your specific customer base?
Christina, I just want to make sure I understand the question. Are you referring to the job figures I quoted or the potential customer profile in our community?
I think it was the customer profile.
I think it was the CBRE, the CBRE data.
Yeah, the CBRE data was just jobs around the project. And that was where, in a 10-mile radius, it noted that there are 250,000 jobs, and within a 15-mile radius, 400,000 jobs. What I was tying that into was a graph from the Housing Production Plan that showed the age demographic breakdown of the town. And what that, and what that was saying is that roughly 60% of the population at the time of that study was, you know, 44 years and younger. And based on that, based on the job profile around the project, and based on our experience in these other communities that we developed, I gave a ballpark assumption of what the sort of barbell age demographic of the project in Westboro could be.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Anyway, thank you. So good evening, everybody. My name is Sealan Pather. I'm a principal of Beinfield Architecture. I'm finding a cough, so forget my voice. I'll be brief, because I know that site tidings, we're really here to see. Just here, this location map. This is the north parcel, Turnpike Road, just oriented to you. And this is Milk Street. Here's the south parcel, here's the bakery here. So when Tom and Andy first brought us this project, we talked about what we wanted the architecture to be. We drove around downtown, we looked at buildings on Main Street and the house in South Street, Church Street, and School Street, for example, downtown. And then, as Tom mentioned, Andy bought a book for the team. He gave us all a copy, images of America series that presents the photographic history of Westboro's buildings. And with all of this, we tapped into an architectural vernacular that we thought was appropriate and fit in. We also showed you in an early meeting examples of work from our portfolio that was similar to those images that we showed you. So with that, I'll start the north parcel. We came up with this. So, again, early days, and we have to go around the entire building, but this is what we think is appropriate. It's a traditional vernacular, but an abstracted version of traditional vernacular. And what I mean by that is that the details are simplified, but the forms resonate with what you see in your town. There's gable ends, steddomus, chenese, kuplars. An important design element on the north side is that there's almost a one-story change in elevation. Well, it is a one-story change in elevation, from the east side to the west side. So what we did, the way that we approached controlling the height of the building was built the fifth story into the roof. So what you're looking at here is actually units behind these roof lines, behind the stormer here. So it transitions from, and I'll show you in plan, it transitions here from five stories in this portion to five stories in this portion. And in both areas, on the west side and the east side, the units are built into the roof. So it controls the mass, but also adds the architecture. So the success of this type of architecture is based on the details. We'll pay attention to that once we get into construction document and so on. It's the trim around the windows, the extensions on the eaves, the kupla details. If we get those right, the building will be successful. We intend to do that. I'll walk you through the plans. So here's Turnpike Road, here's Milk Street. There's an entrance of Turnpike Road, and there's an entrance of Milk Street. Well, if you are a resident, you'd loop around, as you know, on the Turnpike Road, coming around on Milk Street, up into the building. So this is the great change. The reason that you're only seeing a portion of the building here is because this is on the higher grade, this is at the lower grade, this is a one-story great change across the entire building. Here's an amenity space. As you've seen in images Tom has shown, Portia takes pride in these. We've worked with, I think, nine or 10 of these amenity spaces with them. We intend to make them beautiful. This is two stories. This is the first story. Then you come up to the second floor, and now the building ruptures entirely. It's a mix of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms, a large courtyard, more than 2,000 square feet. Eric will go through plans for that landscape architecture, but the idea is that it's a curated experience within this, within the courtyard here, all the units facing onto it, a two-story amenity that you enter the bottom and get to the second floor and walk onto the courtyard. This is a typical floor. It's a highly amenities building. You'll have, it has elevators, trash chutes, and obviously your stairs. And as you transition to the high portion of the building, this is, you see it here in plan, but this is what I mentioned. This entire floor is built into the roof line of the building. So I'll just go back to that. So if you look at this corner, that's that portion of the building right there. And then materials, we thought would be carpet going across the roof, we forget that, and shingle, but materials that represent what we've seen, we've seen Tom, and images we've seen that booked at Tom's show. So that's the north parcel.
Sorry, quick question. Can you please, sorry, just real quick, can you reorient on, for the, on which, like the Milk Street versus Route 9, on like two slides up? Yeah.
So this, this is, right, this is Turnpike Road, right here with nine, and Milk Street is, you can't see it, but it's back here.
Okay, so then on the next slide.
On this?
A shorter, yeah, so the longer, go ahead.
So this is Milk Street? And this is Turnpike Road?
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I go to the south side, or you may want to?
Yeah, no, I'm good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, yep, of course. So this is the top parcel. So, because you know, we only had images from Turnpike Road for this presentation, so both those images. So if you're looking at, what I just showed you was you standing here and looking at the North Parcel. Now I'm going to show you standing here looking at the South Parcel. Excuse me. So now the South Parcel, here's the Bakery in the corner. So again, standing here, looking this way, looking south. And this is what we think the building can be. The idea is that the building, the vernacular is similar, but the buildings are not the same. This, we use a gamble of form in this building. Again, though, the fourth floor of this building is built into the roof. You see one, two, three, and then the fourth story is built into the roof. But the use of this vernacular, the use of the stuff of architecture picks up the massing. And what we hope you'll get is two buildings that that talk to each other on either side of the Turnpike. We will change the base slightly, materials, same carpet, shingle, change the colors subtly. And we think that this, again, speaks to the architecture that you have in your town. In the planning of Milk Street. So this is Milk Street to be clear. I'm sorry, and we should make sure that these, the names event, but here's Milk Street right here. And here's the Turnpike up here. To the north, here's Milk Street here. So you'd loop in and. And out onto Milk Street on this property. There's no connection on this property to Turnpike, to Turnpike Road. And again, somewhat similar layout, parking around the building, similar layout and that's a U-shaped building with a curated courtyard in the middle. And a large amenity, and again, same concept with the amenity, this will be the, hopefully the showstopper and relates to the courtyard. Same mix of ones, twos and threes. Trash rooms, elevators, the typical floors. And that's it, right? If you look at these. Two buildings side by side. Between them. If you can imagine them on either side of Turnpike Road, we think it's an engaging. Treatment of the corridor as an entrance into your town. And I can take questions, but Joe's got the civil engineering next.
Thank you, Ceehan. If you could stop sharing, I'll share my screen and go over the civil engineer. Everybody see that?
Yep.
Great. For the record, Joe Peznola from Hancock Associates, his office is at 315 Elm Street in Marlborough, Mass. So we are the project civil engineers. I'm gonna. So the North, North Side, as we've been talking about, is 5.73 acres. It currently has two residential houses on it at 221 and 223 Turnpike. There, the 171 Milk Street is is in the back and it was a property that was once associated with with the school. And there's just a garage left on the property that has a driveway on Milk Street. On, the South Parcel is 4.4 acres and currently has a large commercial building. With a parking lot on the east side and an entrance on Turnpike and an entrance on on Milk. There is a, the bakery parcel in the middle is, I mean, up in the corner of Turnpike and Milk is not part of the property. That's a little cutout of the overall, the overall parcel.
Joe, could you advance your slide?
It didn't advance?
It didn't for me. I don't.
Yeah, I still see the Hancock Associates also.
Okay. There you go. Not sure what's going on. There you go. There you can see the North, North Site layout.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it not allowing you to do presentation mode?
I can try presentation mode, but that was, seemed to be the problem last time.
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to figure it out for next time, so we know what to troubleshoot.
Can you see the North Site layout now?
Yes. It's the same.
It's. So you're on the North Site layout.
Correct.
Yep.
But not in presentation mode.
Oh, it's not in presentation?
No.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in presentation mode, so I'm not, not sure why that.
Maybe, um. If you do, if you do up in the corner, you can do share to teams. That might help. Or if you do like the teams like live. If you have that as an option.
I don't see.
Just because it's like hard to see. So like up in the red button that was up in the corner, it should, um. You should be able to say like. Oh, next to it should say present in teams. Do you not see that?
I don't. All I see is share.
Okay.
Okay, maybe just zoom in then on that, on what, where you just were a little bit.
Okay.
That should. Everybody's doing great, though.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
All good.
Technical difficulties, but we're all on, we can hear each other and we see something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Can you zoom in just a little bit on that, though? On the bottom. The bottom right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, this is the, the North Site. And we have a right in, right out entrance on Turnpike Route 9. This entrance will be subject to mass, mass DOT approval. And Mr. Meeshow from MDM can talk a little bit more about that process when, when his, when he's up. And then we'll have a full functioning entrance on. Milk Street, which is directly across and integrated with the Beetleback that comes between 135 and Milk Street. So that's coordinated with, with that for, for the traffic motion. The, the parking field will be around the building. And 360, 60 degree access with, that's zoomed in too much. Um, with the, kind of the entry here, as Ceehan talked about, the, the amenity space here is the main entrance. This parking field will, will rise up with the grades. There's about a 10 to 12 foot differential from Milk Street up to the, to the southeast corner of the site. So we're working with the grades so that the entry here is one story above the entry over to here. And then that, that entry, the entry in the northeast corner will be up on that upper level. And the entries down here will be to the lower level. The courtyard and, and pool area will be up at that second level. So there'll be pedestrian access into the courtyard from, from here. And this, this sidewalk here will, will have access to some of the lower level utility rooms. So there'll be some retaining walls, you know, in this area to separate the two. But we have tried to work with the, the grades on site to, to minimize. On the impacts and the cuts and fills. So. The, I won't go over too much on the, the next slide, which is the, kind of the grading drainage and, and utilities plan. Safe to say it's, there's a lot going on to be able to service, service the, the building. We are, again, from a grading standpoint, down at the Milk Street entrance and coming up to, to the lower level. And then topographically coming up through this, this parking, these parking fields to the, to the second level. And then back down as we come back around to the Milk Street entrance. We have subsurface infiltration systems throughout the site to handle the, the post-development stormwater. On, and generally, everything onsite flows from, from east to west. There's a couple of municipal catch basins on Milk Street that, that we will, that we're tying into. That's where all the water goes now and we, through our subsurface infiltration systems, will. Mimic that existing flow from the site to, to that municipal drain system. So we are. We'll be running through all of that, those calculations and that information with the third-party peer reviewer and working through those, those details. We will be connecting sewer and water to the existing utilities in Milk Street. There's an eight inch sewer line and a 12 inch water line. We are looping the water into the site and out of the site, proposing hydrants at various locations throughout the site. And we will review those locations with the, the fire department, what we did on a preliminary basis. We think we've got it, but we'll refine that with, with the fire department to make sure that they are happy with, with that. So moving on to the South Site. As Ceehan showed there, this will have two entrances on Milk Street and no entrances on Turnpike. It, the, the both entrances will be fully, fully functioning and we have parking fields on four sides of the building. We do have a fire lane that will be constructed of a grass pave. System called Eco Raster that we used on the Marlborough project. And we've, we will, we've shared that with the fire department. They seem okay with that. We told them that we will get them. More details on the structural capacity of that and the ability to obviously withstand the, the fire trucks. The, we do have a proposed dog park in the southeast corner. And that will, from a grade, grade standpoint, will require a retaining wall around two sides. We've got a courtyard in the center that, that opens up to the, to the east. From a grading standpoint and, and utility standpoint, again, a lot of information here, but. Similar to the South Site, everything flows on this site from, from east to west. And somewhat in a southerly direction and in the eastern portion. And we do have, again, kind of the same situation in which we have entrances. Here at the lower level and then an entrance on the north, northeast side that will be one, one level above. So there is some, some great, great changes or elevation changes as we move through the site. To try to build, you know, within the site and mimic that. One of the challenges on both the north and south side is that the, these sites were. Kind of more address Route 9 and not Milk Street. And there's kind of a steep grade from Milk Street onto the site, onto each of the sites that poses a, you know, a little bit of a challenge to be able to. To get the functioning entrances on Milk Street and, and, and move through the site. From a drainage standpoint on this site, we just have one infiltration system in the southeast corner underneath the dog park. That will take the majority of the, the site. The site being developed, there's a little less need for, for drainage, drainage infrastructure. To match the post-development flows. We do, similar to the North Site, have an overflow connection to the municipal drain system, which goes under Milk Street. And over to the area between 135 and Milk. And there's some more drainage structure that goes under 135 here and over to. Kind of the periphery of the job lot, commercial site. To the south, there really is no formal drainage structure, infrastructure there. There's no catch basins. It just kind of sheet flows into a depression. That's to the south of this Beetleback. And so we're proposing formalize that with a, with a new drain pipe. And that will take kind of, kind of some of the sheet flow that happens now from the developed site that comes on to Milk Street and could pose. A icing problem. So one of the, one of the issues on this site that, that we heard was the flooding problems at Carlton Gardens. So just looking, just getting into some of the technical aspects of, of how we look at drainage. These are subcatchments that SC5 and SC4 flow south onto 161 Milk. And, and into a wetland that's associated with that site, which borders on Carlton. So if Carlton's flooding problem was due to issues with that wetland. Our contribution to, to any of those problems would be from these two areas on our site. But when we look at the proposed condition, all of this drainage will now be. Attenuated through the new system and diverted over to the Milk Street system. So we'll actually improve the, any contribution to those problems on, on Milk Street. Then you can see are these two analysis, this analysis point DP3. In our drainage is, is a drastic reduction in that direction. But we are reducing in all directions as we are required to. And just a little close up of that infiltration system and retaining wall. Now, this will just be a level area. Right now it's kind of a hole or a steep embankment. So we'll be putting a retaining wall in and then developing this drainage system and on top of that will be our, our, our dog park. So happy to answer any questions or we could, we could do that a little bit later. Next up in presentations is Mr. Meeshow from MDM.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening, board members. For the record, Robert Meeshow, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. I'll let Joe close out of his presentation and I will. Take you up, Christina, on the tab that says present in teams. So if this doesn't work, bear with me, right? I'm going to try it. Okay. And.
It's going to work for you.
I hope so. Loading the file in PowerPoint Live. Okay, it's doing something.
Yep.
Interesting present. Wow. First time I've done that process. Okay, it's, it's loading. There we go. Okay, can you see that on the screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so um I'm gonna give really just a very high-level overview of the transportation assessment that we've done for the property. I'll go to the next slide here. Let's see if we can. Can you see full screen on your side, by the way, because I'm only seeing like the notes version of the presentation?
I I can see the visual.
You can, okay.
Yes.
Okay, uh so uh the board is aware of the orientation of the sites. Uh, for context, uh, these, of course, are very dependent and oriented toward Route Nine. And the interchange itself, it's a unique project in that way in that it very much relies on the interchange connections at Milk Street, uh Route one thirty-five. And uh at least in the case of the north parcel, a direct connection, a driveway connection to that parcel. Um, all of those driveways are subject to mass DOT um review and approval. Uh, while Milk Street um is essentially a local road, it's still under the jurisdiction of mass DOT in this particular area. Uh, and in that realm, we've we've done some outreach with DOT to understand what their perspective would be uh on each of the access points that Joe had just mentioned. Uh, we continue to work through that process, but there's a general concurrence from mass DOT that's what what's being proposed here is appropriate and conforms with their standards and criteria. Uh, the one exception that will need a little more work is the driveway directly onto Route Nine, uh which in its current form is shown as a right-in, right-out driveway. The mass DOT district office has indicated their preference to have that serve as an entrance driveway. So that there's a a means of avoiding a potential weave condition uh on the Route Nine quarter. But what what's been presented is essentially um, you know, done with concurrents by mass DOT with that one exception. What's shown in here in red dots are all of the um intersections that are um serving the property within the interchange itself. And they would include the, what we call Beetleback connections that connect Milk Street to one thirty-five. Uh, and each of the ramp terminals that go to or from the Route Nine quarter, right? Uh, as well as the driveways themselves. And we've studied each of those connections and driveways in in great detail. To put uh some context on how much traffic this combination of of parcels would generate, we've turned to industry standard trip rates. Uh, they're well-recognized as an appropriate standard to apply to estimate peak hour and daily trip activity. Uh, and we've also uh estimated trip activity associated with the existing use of the, what is really an office building on the site. It's actually being used as a social club today. Uh, but you'll see that the net effect of developing the two parcels for residential use is a rather modest traffic generator uh that in in net sum would generate uh about um just over a hundred total vehicles uh per hour, vehicle trips per hour during peak hours. Uh, they range somewhere between a hundred and sixteen and a hundred and nineteen net uh trips. And over the course of an entire day, twenty-four-hour period, about fifteen hundred vehicle trips per day. To um understand what that means in terms of impact, uh what we've shown here in very graphical format is is a schematic uh that would show the orientation of the sites relative to Route Nine. Route Nine uh is central to this diagram in the double line. Uh, the Route one thirty-five quarter is shown uh on the left side uh north to south. And then you'll see the Milk Street connections on the right side. Uh, boxes uh to page north and page south uh represent each of the sites, the north parcel site, which in its entirety would generate uh during a peak hour, in this case, the morning peak hour, uh sixty outbound trips versus eighteen inbound trips, about a vehicle a minute uh exiting the property. Uh, where the south uh parcel would be generating an equivalent but slightly less um of volume uh at about fifty-two exiting vehicles per hour and sixteen entering for a total of about a vehicle a minute again overall. Uh, so the combined effect of both of these parcels, when you take those trip activity levels and distribute them to employment centers in and around the area, would suggest that um nearly on, you know, the vast majority of trips would be oriented, not surprisingly, to the Route Nine quarter itself uh via the interchange. There'll be very little interaction between the site and the local roadway systems. Most of the interaction and trips, the increases in trips will be oriented to the interchange itself. As we look at um points north, uh very little trip uh change relative to today's condition. There really aren't many employment centers to or from the north uh or destinations, if you will. Uh, to the south, toward the town center, we expect there to be fewer than twenty additional new vehicle trips being generated to or from that uh area of town. And as we focus on the Route Nine quarter, we can see that the majority of trips would really be oriented to the Boston employment market to the east versus the Worcester market to the west. And so uh we we're looking at a total vehicle increase on Route Nine of uh about a hundred trips to the east and about a vehicle every two minutes, thirty trips or so to the west. Um, if we look at the equivalent evening peak hours, again, schematically, the the trip numbers are very similar. The trip patterns reverse themselves, where most of these trips would be uh originating from the employment center uh or the local, um, you know, uh uh employment centers and returning to the site in the opposite direction. Uh, again, all of which are really focused principally on the interchange itself. Uh, so we've spent a lot of time looking at the operations of each of those um ramp terminals, connections to Route Nine, the driveways. We've quantified uh in delay terms what those connections um are likely to sustain in terms of average delays. We've assigned a letter grade uh known as level of service to each one of those locations for today's baseline condition, a condition that looks seven years into the future and it anticipates some level of growth independent of the project. And then adds the trip-related uh activity, which I just described, to that number to present a so-called build condition, a future-year build condition. And so each of these blocks uh represents uh each of the points that we've um evaluated. And you'll see on a level-of-service uh scale rating going from A to F that these um uh driveways, these ramp connections uh all operate at level-of-service C or better, uh which is well within an acceptable operating standard uh for a suburban location like this, right? So there really aren't any specific capacity constraints that exist within the interchange or the connections to or from um where these properties are located. Uh, we've discussed this with with mass DOT uh in detail. They've concurred uh with the results uh based on their local knowledge and understanding and experience with the interchange and the connections that exist here. So the story here is that the interchange in its current form, including the Beetlebacks, are sufficient in their current form to accommodate uh the relatively modest increase in trips that these projects are like uh likely to generate. Finally, um as we look at ways to optimize or minimize the amount of uh trips that would be generated from the uses, uh we're looking at implementation of several um transportation demand management policies uh and practices uh that would include, as they would for for similar projects in the Commonwealth, uh through the leasing office, a transportation quarter coordinator whose job would be to inform new tenants of available public transportation uh and other means of transportation uh that would be available to residents uh either through uh state sponsored programs or or locally. Um, the uh posting of that same information, um provision of electric vehicle charging stations uh on property, uh preferential parking uh for the for for those folks who use low-emission vehicles, secure-covered uh bike parking within ea- each of the buildings uh and onsite support services and amenities, uh you know, onsite mail uh services, et cetera, delivery, package, delivery rooms, and things of that that nature. Um, so we conclude that the project relative, certainly to the by-right uses that could be built on the on these combined sites, that this is a combination of low-generating, uh easily-accommodated uh residential uses uh without the need for any major infrastructure upgrades or or improvements. Um, I will pare it back, though, something that Tom mentioned earlier, and that is uh this developer very much wants to collaborate with the community uh to help leverage and secure uh potential funding for longer-term improvements uh as other developments have done in town. Um, and while they're not specifically required to meet the operating needs of this particular combination of of buildings and and development, uh I think there's very much interest in in partnering with the town to secure and and facilitate uh, you know, potentially getting funding for longer-term infrastructure improvements that would be uh, you know, brought to bear in the interchange generally. Next up is landscape architecture, Eric Rains. So I am going to exit uh stage right and let Eric do his thing. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Eric, sorry, before you start, um, is there anyone else presenting after you?
Uh, I would be turning it over to Brian Falk again to do the wrap-up.
Okay, great. I just, if there's gonna be a few more, I wanted to get some questions in uh from the board if if they had any. But if it's just one more, I think we're good.
Yeah, um, one question, and maybe Christina might know the answer to this. I don't know how to exit out of this present in teams mode.
Um, I think you you could tell you up at the top, right? You could say stop sharing.
Yeah, that's what I, it it says share. It, you, I'm used to seeing it with the.
If you go back to your, go back to your, yeah, there should be a shop, stop, share, but otherwise you can go back to your actual presentation. Um, and you should hopefully see it there, too.
Yeah, just, you know, I'm just gonna X out, so bear with me.
Sometimes if you hit the escape button, that will also trigger it.
Okay, uh, yep, there we go. Worked. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've shared the wrong. Okay, there. Can everyone see that?
Yep. Yes.
Yes.
See if I can make it bigger. So um as everyone's walked through the orientation, uh for the record, Eric Rains, landscape architect. Um, everyone's walked through the orientation. Turnpike Road runs basically east-west and Milk Street runs north-south. And this is the north building, uh the north side. And so from a design perspective, building on on everything you've heard so far, we want to take advantage of the distance from the facade of the building, particularly out to Turnpike Road, and then from the facade of the building out to Milk uh Street. Uh, take advantage of that space and gives us the ability to utilize larger canopy-sized trees. Um, the objective would be to get uh as much tree cover around the perimeter of the site as possible. You can see across Milk uh Street, so the existing vegetation there and then 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 across the north in particular. What ceiling? Okay, sorry. Um, so we want to utilize those spaces to uh to integrate that, the the plant material. The regulations and the design guidelines, um, you know, re-expected at least sixty percent of the plant list would be the native vegetation, which we've, we we both um meet and exceed on both buildings. Uh, and then that's followed up with lower-story plantings of perennials and ground covers and native shrubs that would uh would serve as more of the, more the accent kind of plant material. The the courtyard that's been mentioned in the middle here is a large space that we again want to introduce uh 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 plant material to soften the views across uh cross views from one side to the other, uh focusing on the swimming pool in this in this in this uh vantage point. Um, it'll have four little pavilions on the corner so that no matter where you're standing to look, you'll see um you'll you'll see layers of amenities within the space. From a lighting perspective, um the lighting meets the regulations, the the within your package that was submitted. Uh, we have a, and I have a slide of it if you'd like to see it. It's a downward-focused uh cutoff fixture that uh that the the analysis demonstrates meets the um meets the expectations of the of the regulation. Then on the south side, as Joe mentioned, the the courtyard space is oriented a little differently. Uh, it's oriented ninety degrees, basically. Uh, the perimeter would be handled the same way that I mentioned for the south, for the north building. We want to, we we introduced and want to use these planted islands to get canopy trees uh growing and within the site. Uh, and similarly, uh the courtyard would be the focus of the of of this building, providing the residents the um ability to go out and enjoy largest, you know, a s- uh of of various scale-sized spaces. There are more people could gather here, you know, smaller groups could gather here, and then there's an open lawn uh here, similar to the the north parcel. And Joe also mentioned the uh the dog park. The lighting parameters um apply in the same way that we're using uh lights within within the parking area that meet the uh the analysis demonstrates that it meets the requirements of the regulations. And I have within the set, um, you know, if you, if you glance over the plant list, you'll see uh the selections are um are you know, they they draw upon the natural and native. And then we have the, you know, the listing of of this, of the evergreens and then shrubs and then ornamental grasses, shrubs, and ground covers for both both parcels. So generally, that's the um the design approach for the landscape. Uh, certainly happy to answer any questions, or if you'd like, we could um bring um Brian back on.
Well, thanks, Eric. I just wanna um wrap us up. Um, just a couple notes um that as part of the special permit application, we are seeking a few waivers. Um, Highway Business District allows the board to waive certain dimensional controls. Um, so for both parcels, we're seeking a waiver of the minimum open space from sixty percent to thirty percent. Uh, the zoning bylaws, point allocation process that was part of that twenty-twenty-four amendment to the Highway Business District accommodates um reduction of open space based on the point allocation system. And we're happy to walk through with you on how we meet um the point reductions to get us down uh from sixty to thirty percent um minimum open space. Also seeking a waiver to increase the maximum height from four stories to five. Um, these would both be five-story buildings. On parking, we're seeking a reduction um from the minimum of two spaces per unit to one point four spaces per unit. Um, that lower parking count is um consistent with industry standards and does allow us to um enhance the open space and green space on the property to the extent that we can. Um, for the north parcel only, we're seeking a waiver to allow access from Route Nine. Um, that would be the right-in-only entrance from Route Nine onto the north parcel that you saw on some of the previous slides. For the south parcel only, we're seeking a waiver from the minimum distance from the edge of the curb to the nearest sideline, uh reducing that from twenty feet to uh from twenty feet to ten feet. Um, we're comfortable that the board can make the requisite legal findings to grant these waivers, uh which will make for a better project from a design perspective and with respect to resident access and traffic flow. Um, so I I thank the board for for listening, thank the team for presenting. Uh, that concludes our formal presentation, and we look forward to the board's questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. Thank you for the your team. Brian, can you, I can hear the echo three. There we go. All right, thank you. Uh, thank you to the post-road team and uh to Brian. So now we'll go through and ask some questions from the or had the board ask some questions, and then we will start taking public comment. Uh, and I just wanna point out that this is going to get continued. We have not gotten a peer review from this uh engineer yet. There will be another hearing on this. So if there are questions from the board or the public, there will be another chance to ask them. Uh, and we'll hopefully get some more information from the engineers and from the applicants to clear up some issues that I'm sure have come up in there in the uh engineer's review that might answer some questions. So um, that being said, why don't we get started with the board? Uh, Chris, you're the only board member on my screen right now, so we'll start with you. Do you have any questions?
I do. Thank you, John. Um, I very much appreciate the um the really thorough presentation. So um, so thank you. And I have seen the Marlboro location. And um I I appreciate the uh the effort within the aesthetic. Um, I think I said at the time, you know, I I would love to live there, right? It's gorgeous. I do have some questions, um, though, as it relates um to to the Westboro locations that you're proposing. Um, I have a couple, so um trying to decide where to start. I'm gonna start, um, I'm gonna start with traffic. And um can we just pull back up? Um, Robert, if you don't mind, maybe throwing back up doesn't need to be in presentation mode or not, or if that's if that's too difficult. But in relation to the, the traffic, when we're thinking about additional, I think it was on the, the north parcel, east-west, I think it was like an estimated like 28 new trips heading west. And I don't have the, I think it was maybe 99 for, for heading east towards Boston. If, if we're thinking about more local employers like UMass, I know came up. I feel like that if we're anticipating a lot of UMass employee, like these numbers seem low, I guess is what I'm saying. If there, if it's looking up, get back up the unit. So for the north, north parcel, two, 206 units and there are some one beds, but also two and three. So we should assume maybe two to three occupants, right? In those, um, from, I'm just surprised that this number is not higher, right? I guess, can you say a little bit more about that? My, because traffic is my biggest concern.
Sure. Yeah, it's, it's a common question. So, and it's a good question. There's a tendency to correlate unit count to the numbers that are on this, this exhibit that's on the screen here. What, what else? What I'll say is this, we've applied an industry standard for mid-rise development using trip rates that are published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE. The ITE trip rates are based on dozen, survey, an inventory of dozens of projects that fit into that particular category. So a mid-rise product is a product that has between four and 10 floors of, of housing. The, the sweet spot for these tends to be somewhere around 200 units. And it's, they're very well established characteristics of these buildings. This same question came up just last night, actually in Plymouth and, and in several prior hearings that I've been involved with. The numbers look low. Well, we've actually taken time to look at built projects in Massachusetts and, and I'd be glad to share this information with the board that are of similar size and orientation to what's being proposed here. So that we understand and have a local basis for comparing to these national standards, these ITE trip rates. And there's a very high level of correlation that the, if you look at, even in Westboro, for instance, and this is a different product type, but Dell Webb, for instance, in, in town there or, or other Pulte projects. And you look at and compare the actual functioning of those projects, how much traffic they generate to the industry standards, they're, they're pretty much spot on. In fact, the industry standards tend to be slightly higher. Think of them in, in a simpler form. Not everyone leaves to go at work at the same time, right? There's typically about a four hour window of time in which trips are being made at about the same level of activity. Somewhere between six in the morning and 10 in the morning. And depending on what your job is, right? If you're a healthcare worker, you're tending to make your trip earlier in the morning to get to an early morning shift. My daughter's a nurse and she's out of the house by 5:30 in the morning. Whereas my other daughter is a city planner and she leaves, you know, at a more traditional time, you know, between seven and seven and 30 in the morning. Health firefighters, police, same, same thing. Researcher might leave later in the morning or a person that does banking or finance might actually do remote work from time to time. So there's a variety of reasons why traffic is distributed over this for, for even a five hour window of time. So if you look at the north parcel, we're estimating over a one hour period of time that you'd have about 60 vehicles, about one vehicle per minute that would be leaving the property. A roughly.
Per hour.
Per hour or roughly 25% of the building, right? And so if you think of them, if you think it in that term, these tend to make more sense.
That makes sense. That makes, sorry, that makes sense with the, the four, you know, four to five hourish span. I guess if, if you don't mind going to the next, I think it was on the next slide where you have the ratings for the intersections. Um, so I, I first, I, I commute, I commute to Marlboro three days a week. I have been caught on Route 9 trying to turn right to get onto Milk. And that traffic can back up pretty badly. And then once you're on Milk, often with the Ocean State Job Lot intersection, it's already, it's a bit of a backup there as well. And I'm through, right? I'm not even trying to get out of that, that plaza. Can we talk a little bit about, about traffic mitigation within those two areas? I know we talked like the grants, right? Was brought up, the potential for infrastructure grants, kind of exploring those, but those are, those points in particular, I think are very heavy in terms of traffic.
Right. So when we did our data collection, we use video based equipment. And, you know, we, we're locally based as well. And I, and I travel through this interchange quite a bit. So I, I understand what you're saying. There are periods of time, not every day necessarily, nor at the exact same time of day, but there will be periods of time when you have slower moving traffic, not necessarily stopped, but slower moving, maybe there's some queuing and delay. What, what's being represented here in letter format is an average operating condition during, in this example, you know, the AM and the PM peak hours. Your example of the right turn from Route 9 onto Milk Street, that, so you're coming from Worcester Way, traveling east and turning right on to Milk Street.
I'm going west. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. So now truth be told, I don't travel this every day, but I travel it often, often during peak hours. And my general experience with the interchange is that, yes, you have to slow down. The ramp terminals themselves have, they're fairly tight. You know, they're, they're not really to a, what they call modern standard where you can decelerate from higher speed comfortably down to 20 miles an hour. So folks will, will decelerate, you know, in a fairly rapid way to, to, to be able to negotiate these ramp terminals. For, for the most part, if you are slowing down, even if you have to stop, you're not delayed. You're not in a stopped position for very long. And so when you look at the letter grade designations, the delays that are being represented are the stopped delays that folks will be experiencing. And, and so what you're referring to is having to slow down and in some cases have to go to what I call rolling queue and then you go through the intersection. These are representing stopped delay and, and the stopped delay here really is not significant. It's not significant in my personal experience and it's certainly not something that we've seen based on the video evidence that we've got from multiple days that we've been out here. Not saying, I'm not saying delays don't happen, but, but these are, these are pretty representative, I think.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I have one more while you have this slide up. Where exactly on the south parcel, where exactly is the entrance? I know we haven't done a site walk yet, and I've been trying to kind of figure out where exactly it lies. But is it?
Yes.
Yeah. Like where is it exactly with like current?
Eric had a nice, had a nice plan on it. Yeah, I was gonna say that there's a better plan in another presentation. So if maybe Eric could pu- pull up his drawing. That'd be great. And I can, so let me get out of this. I'll hit the escape.
I have a, I have, if you want to pull that up, just to keep moving, I have just a couple other questions and maybe we can, we can swing back. I had some questions. I know we mentioned a couple of the requests, like reducing some of the open space, height restrictions, et cetera. I, I believe you're also looking for some adjustments on the, for affordability. And so I just had a couple of questions on, on those as well, if that's okay. And I don't think it came up at the end. So I just wanted to make sure, Brian, that that, that I should ask them. Just because they weren't listed or you didn't mention them at the end.
Okay. I'm not sure if you, do, do you want Brian to answer that first and then we'll go circle back to your access question?
I can, I can defer to Tom on that. Tom, if you can jump on that one.
Yeah, absolutely. Would, would you like Bob, just because the image is up to cover that last question first before we move on?
Yeah, that works.
Yeah. Okay. So there are two curb cuts here. The first is an exit driveway and that's on the upper left corner of the site, right? So that's an exit only driveway. That is roughly 140 feet from Route 9. So if you were to, you know, leave the site, you'd have, you'd either be turning right to get directly onto Route 9 or you'd be turning left to go back to the, what we call the beetle back, right? To reverse direction and, and go back onto Route 135 and, and use the interchange. The subtly curb cut is directly opposite the beetle back. Right? So if you were looking to get back to this development, you come off of Route 9, make your right turn on to Milk and the left turn directly into that location. And that's an enter only driveway, right? So you've got enter only there, exit only on the top.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, can I, can I just jump, piggyback off of that? So Brian, you had mentioned you guys are looking for a waiver. Is, is it on this, on the south development for the line of sight?
That's correct. The, the, just pulling up for you. Yeah. Minimum distance from the edge of the curb to the nearest sideline.
Yeah, it's not a line of sight. It's just, there's, if I can, if I can share my screen, I can, I can show it to you on our plan. So it's this dimension here.
Okay.
And it just, this, this is required. The bylaw be 20 feet. And that would not put it in alignment. So that's, that's why we're asking for that word.
Okay. No, thank you. I just figured since we were on that, I would just piggyback off of it.
John, do you, do you, John Gelsic, should we, like, I have other questions, but I also want to make sure people get to ask. Should, should we want to go maybe topic by topic? Like if other people have traffic, we don't have to.
No, I think that's gonna get, I think that's gonna end up going all over the place because a lot of these issues are interrelated. So a question on school children generation might also go to traffic. So if you have other questions, you can ask them. I mean, do you have a ton of other questions? Should we kind of break it up?
Oh, you could, why don't we, I feel, I feel like I'm, we can break it up and then I can look back.
John, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. I'm good for right now. And I, Chris, I would say just continue with that. I have a couple, but I think they're gonna take a while. So.
Okay.
Oh, you want to keep going, Chris?
Sure.
All right.
Um, okay. So Tom, did you want to speak to the affordability piece?
Yes. So the, the Affordable Housing Trust, Post Road have probably met in person two or three times, maybe four times and had multiple conversations on the phone and on, on email as well regarding affordability. I would, I would provide two 60,000 foot sort of overview comments before we, we get into that. And the first being that I, I believe the genesis of the, the regulations, one of the things that we discussed with, with Jenny's team as well as the trust, is that it seemed like the requirement of 20% had, had, had some bearing in the new regulations that were written, which happened to be written around the same time, I believe, that the MBTA Community Zoning Act compliance regulations were being thought of. And in that MBTA Communities Act, I believe it says that the affordability requirement shall be 10%. And if a community wants it to be greater than that, it has to be justified by what's called an economic feasibility analysis. And I, I'll, I'll say right away, just because this is our job. We, we are pretty good at understanding from an economic feasibility standpoint. When you, when you have a blender of ingredients, as we kind of think about it, when you put in construction costs, what market rents in a community are, what taxes are going to be like, what land costs are and what affordability levels are. We can gauge pretty quickly economic feasibility. And when we, when we first started hearing about 20%, we had asked, you know, where that economic feasibility report was that justified the 20% request. We wanted to see what the sort of nuts and bolts inside that were. And we were, they were, Jenny's team shared it with us. We reviewed it. And we asked to have a conversation with her team, some, some board members and some board members from the trust. And what we tried to do in the, in the spirit of trying to be an honest and collaborative partner is we said, we would like to come in and just give a sort of objective peer review, if you will, of that economic feasibility report. And we thought that was warranted, again, in the spirit of honest collaboration with the, the community, but also because we identified some major, major flaws in that economic feasibility report. Major, major flaws that in some, in conclusion meant that the recommended conclusions that 20% affordable in Westboro was feasible was, in our opinion, inaccurate, very inaccurate. And we provided some feedback from other market participants. And we, and we went through that analysis and, and that was sort of the start of the discussion that we had with the Affordable Housing Trust about reaching a mutually agreeable solution that could create new affordable housing. I think it's important to note, at least at Post Road Residential, we're fully aware of the affordable and housing crisis that is in Massachusetts. It's our opinion and rather, I think, well documented and researched. Our opinion is that the supply side solution to the housing crisis is the most efficient way to create more levels of affordability, meaning the more you build, the lower rents can be. So we went through that discussion and I'll actually, let me share my screen. See if I can do this. Just on, on, on that point alone, I'll, I'll start, I'll start kind of with these, but are you able to see my screen now? And I apologize, apologize.
I think it's loading.
Okay.
It's just loading.
Yeah, Christina, whenever you see it, let, let me know and I'll, I'll quickly go over these.
Maybe reshare. It's like a white screen.
Let me see if it goes again. And if not, I'll just describe it and then can share with you personally perhaps later. Did that, anything come up Christina?
No.
No.
Yeah.
What, what, what I'm looking at right now is just a few different graphs. And it was part of the discussion with the Affordable Housing Trust. And, and again, it was augmenting our sort of supply side economic thinking about the best way to, you know, kind of create more affordable housing. Because if, if a project is not economically feasible, you know, the saying is that 0% of 20 is zero. So the, the two graphs I wanted to show you was one, a, a bar graph of the 35 largest metro areas in the country and the housing production levels in all of those 35 metros. Boston is dead last. And one of the reasons why it's dead last, sure, it's, it's, it's difficult to find sites and, and costs are very high and to construct new product. But when you think about a, a blender and you put all of the ingredients in a blender and you think about what the outcome of that, let's say it's a smoothie or something. There are a lot of restrictive cost regulatory ingredients that go into that Boston to produce more housing. in, in the metro area. And affordability is, is a big one. The, the second graph I was going to show after the bar graph showing Boston as the, you know, lowest housing production metro in the country in 2024 and 2025, was like a scatter chart that showed on the X-axis, it showed the annual increase in metro apartment supply. And on the Y-axis, it showed the annual rent growth in those markets. And what it shows very clearly is that the more supply that's built, the lower, you know, rent levels are. So that was sort of the foundational basis of what our discussions began with, with the Affordable Housing Trust. And there was obviously push and pull, but it was always very honest, very candid and very open. And ultimately where we landed is in a place that I think was mutually acceptable to everybody, understanding that, and this is, this is the truth, that we really are in this project pushing economic feasibility to the, to the brink. The real estate market isn't in a depression right now, but it's been in a recession for three to four years. And 15% affordability at sort of the bifurcated AMI levels, meaning 10% at 80% AMI and 5% at 120% AMI, sort of serving those different income brackets that the housing production plan called for was, was where we landed. And I think everybody was, was satisfied with, with, with a proposed buyout for those, the delta of the units between 20% and 15% at $50,000 a unit. So, yeah, in short, we had a very long and good discussion with the Affordable Housing Trust. And I'm, again, sort of very appreciative of that discussion because I think it's reflective of, you know, both the private market and the public sector coming together and trying to figure out how to, how to come up with a solution that's beneficial to the community and that allows economic feasibility, which really does drive everything to happen. So that, that's the sort of backstory about the.
Okay, that's helpful. I guess my question within those units, I know they can't have anything on the exterior to kind of differentiate, but will they bring anything within the units to differentiate from a market rate unit versus an affordable unit? Like appliances? No, okay, cool. That's great. What about accessibility, like wheelchair, except not within, not necessarily within the affordable units, but will you have wheelchair accessible apartments?
Yes, both, both the topic of the affordable units versus market rate units and their design and finishes, that is a law or a code requirement at a minimum that you have to follow. That is objective. You cannot cut any corners there. And similarly, Celine, you might be able to chime in here, but the, the building code specifies a certain percentage of your units to be accessible. And there are two different levels of accessibility. I don't know the exact percentages, but X percent have to be accessible at A level and another percent have to be accessible to an even, let's call it deeper accessibility need.
Right, like the ADA versus like wheelchair accessible?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So you will have, it won't just be ADA, it will also be wheelchair. They'll have some wheelchair accessible?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. I have two final questions on, go ahead.
I was just going to say, yes, you're right. There's 10% of people have accessibility and the rest of them are accessible.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Just two quick questions on environmental. I think in the, some of the summary paperwork, it mentioned EV-ready. And then I think tonight we saw charging stations. So I guess which, is it, will there be charging stations or is it focused on like EV-ready?
Celine, I don't know if you want to answer this in more detail, but the code requires us to have a certain percent of the spaces EV-ready. And then at our discretion, because we think there's just pure market demand for it, we are putting in EV charging stations in both projects right away.
Okay, do you have a number-ish?
Yeah, it's in our. Yeah, the code requires 20% to be EV-ready. And we're going to do five stations to, so 10 spots on each site.
Yeah, because Christina, those five, those five stations are those dual-port charging stations. So you'll have, you know, additional capability.
Okay, great. Final question from me right now. On, when we think about sustainability, especially as we're moving from potentially like the proposed from 60% to the 30%, is there any, has there been any discussion around like covered, like maybe not on the street side, but like solar-covered parking? Which would give people, would need to shovel out their car, right? You'd have the, the solar capabilities as well as the additional like benefits of having the power, solar power.
Yes, so on the topic of sustainability and the process of having a chance to achieve that waiver, as you know, and as we've mentioned, the, there's a very prescriptive system that you have to obtain a minimum of 12 points in order to qualify for that. And what we've done is we've met with Lila, the Sustainability Coordinator and Jenny, and we've gone over a very detailed sort of analysis of how many points we are going to accumulate in the, you know, construction of, of this project. And I'd share that with you if I could, let me try one more time and I'll share it because it's.
We can see something. We can see supply-side solution to housing crisis now.
All right, let me, let me see if I can. Let me see if I can do this quickly. Stop, share. Let me try one more thing. Okay. Share. Christina, can you see this now or no?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the, what we called open space reduction support, forgive the name, we're just trying to put a name to it. Showing, showing compliance with, with the 12 points. And this goes through whether or not we are saying that we are going to take or not take points with some of the various options in that prescriptive list. And as you can see on the bottom in summary, we are saying, you know, without a doubt, we're going to be able to get 18 points. And what we also discussed with Lila and Jenny is that the regulations allow for, quote, "other sustainable measures to be considered for other points." And items that you see here in the bottom right-hand are things that we like doing in all of our buildings today that, you know, arguably should qualify for some points that weren't in the prescriptive list provided in the, in the, in the documents. So at the end of the day, we feel very confident that we're going to be between 18 and 28 points. And, you know, we, we could perhaps go over at a later time all of the individual ones, but this, this is, this is what, this is the sort of template that we discussed with, with Violet and Jenny.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. No more questions, Chris?
Nope. Thank you, John.
All right. John, any new questions since that?
Yeah, just, oh, from, from that, I just have, I just have one question about schools. Tom and Andy, just to echo off of what Chris said. Appreciate the in-depth presentation. Been doing this for a few years now and I don't think we've seen a, a group present and have that much information. So thank you for that. Obviously you guys are aware of this perception throughout many communities where you look to develop multifamily units and projects. Can you speak to the perception that it will overcrowd school systems?
Yes, of course, John. Can I ask you if you can see my screen, which just is a blank slide that says exhibits?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to try to go through this relatively quickly, but it, it's a very, let me go back, it's, it's a very important conversation to have, I think, for a number of reasons. Number one, Westboro has fantastic schools. If you look at MKAS scoring, SAT scoring, or, or the NISH reports, you know, Westboro Public School Districts are certainly top-notch. At the same time, there are what I would call sometimes, you know, misconceived notions about school-aged children, generation from these types of projects. So what we've tried to do is just put together sort of a fact-based, research-supported and actual live data sort of response to that. There are really two reasons why, John, that we believe that we're going to have a minimum impact. And let me just start by saying what we think that impact is. What we did is we asked the, you know, our partnering community in Marlborough, how many public school children are in the Green District, the two projects that we've developed there? And the, the ratio, that ratio was applied to our unit count here in Westboro for the number of units that we're proposing. And that school-aged population yield, if you will, is 19.4. So call it 20 school-aged children. There are two main reasons why in today's day and age, the misconceived notion of a huge amount of public school generation is, is just not correct. Number one, at a high level, as I mentioned earlier, the, the stock, the age of the housing stock in Westboro is significantly old. On average, again, 81% of the housing stock was built before 1980 and 1999. And from a development perspective, what was happening in terms of how developers produced housing at that time was on much more, almost like post-World War II suburban sprawl sites. And the density of those sites is similar to townhomes and single-family homes. The amenities that these larger projects in Westboro have are much different than the amenities that, that we would have in our project. So the, the photo on the right is Westboro Village. That density is seven units per acre. The project on the, on the left is Park Village, built in 1969. And that has a density of 15 units per acre. So the, the size of the, the actual square footage of our units are much, much less, 15, 20% less than the average stock in town. And the unit mix is far more concentrated in our project to the smaller unit types that don't attract as many families. So the, the main first difference is the general evolution of modern multifamily design and what the consumption preferences are in, for that consumer. This is corroborated in a lot of the planning documents that we reviewed. The housing production plan confirmed that, you know, at a high level, multifamily apartments don't result in significant stress and that newer multifamily buildings with smaller unit size have significantly fewer school-aged children than the older ones. So that's, that's reason number one, sort of the evolution between 1960, 1970 apartment garden-style development and more dense multifamily communities that are really geared towards singles and, and, and young working professionals. The second reason, and perhaps the most significant, is major demographic shifts. And, and what that means at a high level is population decline and slowing household formation. And I promise I'll go through this quickly, but it's important. So I want to go through three different data points that have to do with national trends. Then I want to go into regional trends that the Massachusetts Area Planning Council sort of corroborates what's happening at the national level. And then into some details about locally what's happening in Westboro. The high-level summaries, however, are that housing production has moderately increased nationally and regionally. Enrollments, however, are moderately declining. And I'll touch on in a minute why they're probably likely to decline. However, budgets are increasing, and I say for fair reasons. I've spent a lot of time listening to the different school committee meetings, select board meetings. I say for fair reasons because the concept of level service budgeting versus, say, level-funded budgeting makes sense and is reasonable, given how good the schools are and not wanting to take services away. So housing is going up, enrollments are going down, but budgets are increasing. So the conclusions at a high level are that demographic trends, not housing production, drive enrollment trends. And that fixed district costs for the school system, not housing, drive budgets. That's just based on the data we're going to go over right now. So the Harvard Joint Center for Housing Studies put out a great demographic projection report early this year. And what they talk about is that this unavoidable slowing population decline because of more deaths than births is going to result in the lowest rate of household growth in any decade over the past 100 years. That's really, really significant. Whether you're, you know, an investor or a developer, demographic trends really drive the bus on where things are going. So people are marrying less, they're marrying later and they're having fewer children. This probably means why there are fewer children in enrollments. Now going down one step to the regional level, the MAPC in 2017 and in 2024 wrote a report called "The Waning Influence of Housing Production on Public School Enrollment." And what they did is they studied over 10 years, 231 public school districts and housing production in the metro region. And the two high-level summary points there is that statewide enrollment declined while housing increased. And then in the maturing suburb category, they talk about, which Westboro is a representative example of, enrollment declined 3% as housing increased. So their conclusion is showed on this, on this scatter chart, which shows, you know, no positive linear correlation to housing production and enrollment. If there was, it would be, you know, a, a straight line, a diagonal line going up to the top right of the graph. Now, in Westboro, there are a few things worth noting. And this is available in, you know, the district budget reports and the school committee reports, as well as the redistricting consultants reports. Number one, enrollment in Westboro over the past decade has gone down about 4%. Many of these documents talk about how the classrooms are comfortably below state guidelines. And many of these schools, at least the elementary schools, are below what is referred to as the capacity utilization target, which means I think the state has a target of 85% sort of capacity in any one school. And at least in the elementary schools, the capacity is between 50 and 73%. And in addition to that, if you use a proxy for sort of the operational healthiness, if you will, of the district in Westboro as a whole, you can look at student-to-teacher ratios. And what we did is we compared, based on the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the most recent data that they have, we looked at Westboro's surrounding communities in the state of Massachusetts average. And you can see that Westboro's relative to neighboring communities in the state of Massachusetts is relatively well-resourced. And the last thought is sort of, okay, if, if, if low, lower household formation is what's really driving lower enrollments in Westboro right now, what does that mean for the future? Well, it probably means that it's going to continue if in the next 10 years, the slowest level of household formation in the past century is going to occur. And then another interesting point I learned was that the K through 4 grades in the district are the lowest enrolled grades throughout the whole district. So that has potential, as they move up in grade, to continue in addition to lower household formation, not filling in sort of the elementary school, the current K through 4 grades that have the lowest enrollment in the district are going to produce lower overall enrollments in the future as, as they go forward. And that utilization capacity that's available is probably going to get lower or the gap between actuals and the state target will, will grow. So, you know, we think that there's going to be roughly 20 kids in the public school system as a result of our project. And it's important to note too, that that's not going to be fully felt until the fall of 2030. And while this might be somewhat controversial, it's, I think there is valid reasons why. And I think the superintendent alluded to one or two of these points. Why a stabilized enrollment as opposed to a steadily trickling decline in enrollment is actually a good thing. The superintendent mentioned that with a stabilized enrollment or with a continuing decline in enrollment, a lot of electives and course offerings can't be offered. And it also, it also offers other benefits. And it also, it also offers other benefits, like predictive planning and budgeting around staffing, and keeps that rather fixed per pupil cost of roughly twenty thousand dollars a student now. It allows for more efficient budgeting there. So we think it's going to be minimal for those reasons. And it's our opinion that that's going to be a continuing trend over the, over the coming years.
Tom, thank you. Just a quick follow-up on to that. So you mentioned that even though enrollment goes down, the budgets continue to increase for the school department and some of the towns and town services. Can you, do you have any data that shows whether it's in Marlboro or other communities you developed and the economic impact that your developments have done, both positive, you know, positive economic impact?
Well, I would say there, there are two things that, that come to mind. Number one, and is, is the net, is the net fiscal benefit nature of these projects? So relative to in-place current taxes on both parcels, upon completion of the project, it's a twenty-three times increase in, in new revenue. And if you take into account those, which is roughly like one point four to one point five million dollars. And if you take into account those nineteen to twenty schoolchildren in twenty thirty, it's still a seventeen times multiple of tax revenue versus in place, or roughly a million to a million one of net fiscal budget money. So from a fiscal standpoint, it's hugely important because new growth is extremely important for, I think, fiscal, you know, municipal finances because, for, for the reasons we discussed. And then the customers, as we mentioned earlier, in this project are going to have high disposable incomes. And all of the businesses and restaurants in town are going to benefit from, from the customers patroning around the community.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, John?
That's it for me for now.
All right. Caroline, any questions? I don't see you on my screen, but I hope you're still here.
I'm here. Yes, I'm here. Yes, thank you again. I'm going to act over. One, the great presentation, really, really helpful information. Most of my questions were on traffic, education, things like that were already answered. I just wanted to, to clarify because I know that the images shown for the north parcel with the in and out on Route Nine, but after, but Mastod was requesting that is just an in, so that I just wanted to clarify that's going to be modified to just being an in rather than an in and an out onto Route Nine from the north parcel.
I can answer for Bob, but yes.
Yeah, yeah, that is correct. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And to clarify, you know, once the applicant gets through local review process, assuming that's successful, then the next step to that process would be a formal application to Mastiot, you know, under their highway access permit process. So all of the design details, while they'll be refined during the local process, will ultimately be approved, if you will, as part of a separate process by Mastiot at that time.
Got it. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions, Caroline?
None for me. Thank you.
All right. Hazel had to step off unless she's still here. Yeah, she had to leave the meeting. So she said she was going to hold her questions until the next meeting. I only have two quick questions. The parking for, I guess, both, both north and south parcel. I know that you are asking to lower the ratio to one point four. Is that a number that you're using just because it's an industry standard? Is that a number that you're using because that's how many spaces you have needed in your developments? I guess what I'm getting at with this is, do you need that many parking spaces? It seemed like even with that lowered ratio, there was a lot of parking on either site. And if you don't need those spaces and you're just proposing them because it's a halfway point between what you need and what the town requires, is the, let me, I'll let you answer that question first. You need those spaces.
I think that some of the earlier slides that John showed us around kind of how we have managed in terms of our-
Kevin Berry, can you please mute? Thank you.
John, we, we believe that that is a both reasonable and market demand-based number for two reasons. Number one, it's the average parking ratio that we have in our Green District project. And those projects are constructed and are sized very similarly. So we do believe that it's, it's market-based. Could it be a little lower? Perhaps. And the, the guiding factor I would say on that is, I believe the board approved between one point two and one point three for projects close by on, on Lyman and Connector Road. But I, I don't, I don't think it's, it wants to be too much lower than one point four, based on our experience in Marlboro.
All right. I guess what I was, what I was getting at is if it, if it was higher than you needed or there was some wiggle room, if there was a possibility of showing those parking spaces on the site plan, but essentially as reserved parking spaces, whereas they're not built out, the area that they are going to take over would not be built out. It would be left in its grassed or, or, or probably not natural state, but, you know, grass state that in the future, should that parking be necessary, that area could be expanded. But otherwise, it would remain vegetated or not paved until that point. So I guess if you're saying you, you need that many spaces, it's probably not a reasonable ask, but it might be something to look at of, if you don't need that many spaces, figure out how many spaces you need. And then if we can set aside, you know, a reserved area to be parking in the future if needed, that would be something that I would be in favor of.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a fair point. I think the market demand is probably a minimum of one and a quarter and at most one point four. And that's probably worth, I don't know, sixty spots, something like that. So we'll, we'll certainly get back to you on that, and we appreciate the thought.
Great. And then the other question I had, and hopefully this will be addressed by the engineer, but I guess I'm just concerned with the dog park being the, in, the stormwater infiltration area. And only, not be, not related, but that area needs a retaining wall. It seems like there is going to be stormwater that wasn't directed there in the past, directed there now. I just want to make sure that we're not going to have underground erosion that's going to jeopardize the structural integrity of any of the foundations in the abutting parcels, anything that this development is looking to do. So is there anything you can explain to us that makes us less concerned about, you know, more infiltrate? I, I like the idea of infiltration, but if you're getting a lot of water in one area, I'm a little concerned about what might happen underground. Is there anything you can speak to for that?
Certainly, we can, we can speak to that. We, we've, it, it's, it's a, a trend that's been going on for the past ten or fifteen years as far as utilizing underground infiltration for the majority of the stormwater needs. It just has to do with the, the cost of land in Massachusetts. Land is expensive, so we need to kind of dual-use it for parking or dog parks and, and, and other, other features and, and put the, put the drainage underneath it. So we've got a lot of experience with putting infiltration systems in like this, putting them in proximate to retaining walls. And we do the soil testing prior, so we understand that the, the underlying soils, we work with the structural engineers that design the walls so that they understand it. And just a kind of the nature of, of, of the beast that, um, we've got a high degree of confidence that the structural integrity of the whole package will be, will be sound. And that the, the resulting, you know, delivery of, of water to a concentrated area with regards to infiltration is, isn't going to be, you know, deleterious just because of the way that water moves through these systems. They go through the, through the catch basins into the pipes, into these systems, into the stone reservoirs beneath it, into the underlying soils. And, and it, the time lag is such that it, it really doesn't manifest itself as, as, as an outward problem to the surrounding, surrounding areas. So the majority of, you know, when we're talking about these systems, the way that they work is, is primarily rate reduction by introduction of an outlet structure that delivers the water in a different direction. So that volumetric detention that's occurring is the, the primary, primary way these systems work. It's not a, it, they're, they're secondarily reliant on the infiltration. So if you look at just the, the numbers, the, the cubic feet per second that go through the soil versus the cubic feet per second that we ratchet back and put out the outlet structure, the, the, the outlet structure's taking a lot more water. It's mimicking existing conditions, but that's where the majority of the water goes. So you see these large systems and you say, oh my gosh, there's so much infiltration happening here. But it's not. The, the volume is not indicative of the quantity of the infiltration. It's more the dependence of that volume to ratchet back the outflow to mimic the existing conditions. And, and these systems are designed for the hundred-year storm. So they're, they're overdesigned because the hundred-year storm doesn't, doesn't happen all the time. So normal operations of these systems, they're, they're underutilized. There, there, there's just not a lot of water in them. So I have a full confidence, I've got hundreds and hundreds of, of, of real-life experience with putting systems that like this, this size, proximate to retaining walls, proximate to other properties. And, and, and they've worked fantastically without, without, you know, any, any adverse impacts. Not to just rest on that, but your third-party peer review is going to tear our calculations apart, and we're going to go back and forth and make sure that not only am I comfortable as the engineer record, but your, your engineer will be comfortable as, as well as the, at least of the town engineer.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I have no more questions, but I just want to say thank you to Post-Road Residential for putting together a pretty comprehensive presentation. A lot of my questions that I had going into this were answered ahead of time, so I, I appreciate that. So now we're going to move to the public section of the meeting, or the public comment section of the meeting. If you can raise your hand, I will have Jenny select you for, and I'll call out the name for who can, who can be speaking at that time. I asked that everyone mute your microphones if you're not speaking, so we don't have any feedback. That can happen quite a bit on these public comment discussions. And then I'm also going to ask that you limit your comments and questions to, to two minutes right now. You know, it's been a long meeting. It's almost nine o'clock right now. Sure, not many of us want to stay too much later, and we also are going to continue this to the, the next meeting, so we have a chance to ask questions. And you can always email Jenny any questions to the board, and we will add them to the record. So that being said, Jenny Mike Ossing, and I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name, Mike Ossing is-
Yep, and, and they can unmute themselves now.
Okay.
No, thank you, John. Thanks, Jenny. And thanks to the members of the planning board for the opportunity to speak. And you got my name perfect, John, so you did a good job. My name's Michael Ossing. I live at forty-three Barley Road in Marlboro, Mass. I'm the president of the Marlboro City Council. So my purpose coming before the planning board this evening is to share my experience as well as the city of Marlboro's experience in dealing with Post-Road Residential. In my twenty-six years on the Marlboro City Council, I've seen numerous developers and projects come before the city council. And I can confidently state that this developer, Post-Road Residential, and the project has been one of the best I have dealt with. By this, I mean, Post-Road Residential does what they say they will do, accurately depicts the project, works well with department heads in the community, and delivers a first-class project that the city is extremely proud of. And I would anticipate the town of Westboro would see the same thing. Andy Montelli and his team first came to Marlboro in twenty sixteen to present a four hundred and seventy-five unit apartment complex in two phases. I've been involved in permitting both the Phase One and Phase Two. And at each turn, Post-Road has been very responsive, and their commitment to quality has been unmatched. I've known Andy and his team for over eight years. During that time, one gets to know if a developer will deliver a quality project. Andy and his PPR team have, are that developer that I am proud to have been associated with and look forward to working with on future projects. As the Marlboro City Council monitored development of both Phases One and Two, we approved Phases Three and Four, which will be constructed in twenty-seven and twenty-nine timeframe. The professionalism, the professionalism and ability to deliver what they say they will build is impressive and unmatched. As a frequent visitor to Westboro, a project of this size should enable the town to apply for MassWork grants to assist in upgrading roads and infrastructure. In Marlboro, PRR project enabled the city to obtain a MassWorks grant to improve the roads adjacent to the project for about two million dollars over on Cedar Hill Street. So, and they wrote letters in support of it, so I would encourage if the board moves forward that they work with Post-Road to do that. In closing, as a twenty-six-year city councillor that has worked with many developers, the Post-Road Residential team does what they say they will do and delivers a quality project that the municipality will be proud of for years to come. Thanks for listening. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Michael. Any other comments from the public? I do not see anyone else's hand raised, so if you don't know how to raise your hand and you can unmute and just get my attention, that would be great. Thomas Johnston, I see you raise your hand.
Thank you, John. Um, thank you for a great presentation. This, this development looks, it's a beautiful development, and I think it would fit into town very, very well. But I do have a lot of concerns about the impact on the schools and to the town. I, I get where you're coming from on these, these surveys and these articles, but I, I think saying there's only going to be twenty students in the school system would, I, I just think is disingenuous. We heard similar arguments when the development was, was put in over by our train station. There was going to only be commuters, high-end, sorry, high earners. There was going to be a lot of kids. And, but I don't know the number of students that come from that development. There is a lot. I, my, my kids have a lot of friends over there. We know a lot of people over there that have two and three kids. By my math, the differential is a hundred and seventy-eight bedrooms over the three hundred and eighty-eight units. I, I think, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to think there might be a kid in every one of those bedrooms. To think there's only going to be twenty, I think is, again, not correct. But even if we talked about maybe a hundred students coming out of this development, we're talking a two-million-dollar impact to the town at twenty thousand dollars a student. And if we distribute that evenly across all the grades, all twelve grades, you're talking about eight-plus students per grade. Yes, our, our class size is, is lower, but we don't really want this class size to be any bigger. So I'm very concerned about that. And, and then there was a comment about the last, you know, about being level service. Last few years, we haven't been level service. We've been level funded. And we have cut, started to cut different classes out of the high schools and out of the other schools. So this is a very big concern to me, as well as some of the other things we haven't talked about, like the impact on our source sewer systems and our wastewater treatment plant. We are not on the Quavon. We have our own wells and reservoirs, of which we have, we always have water bans pretty, pretty much immediately in, in the summer and the spring. So I, I don't think we've talked about any of that as well. So I, I think, again, it's a beautiful development and, and, you know, I think it would fit well in the town, but I really am concerned. And I, I've talked to a lot of people who are concerned about the impact on the resources in town. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak. And again, thank you for a good presentation.
Can you give us your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Five Sandra Pond Road. I apologize.
No, you're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas and John. Yeah, I meant to, meant to say, if you do speak as a member of the public, please say your name and address. It's for the minutes. Just to touch on two of those points, Thomas, and I, I agree with you, it's a concern. We want to look at it. Some of the things that kind of get missed with the schoolchildren consideration is, and I'm not going to get into it fully now because we do want to look into it a little bit more and make sure that we're not going overboard with, with what the impacts to the town would be. But when you look at developments like this, we tend to forget that even in that worst case scenario, eight kids per class or eight kids per grade, that will be distributed across the classrooms. So you won't really be seeing new teachers. You won't be seeing new classrooms and need for new schools. And then these developments also pay into the tax base. So that the payments that we're going to get from the development and from the residents who live there will offset the additional cost of any schoolchildren. Not saying it's going to be an equal wash. I don't know how many kids are going to be coming out of here. But I do want to say that there are those considerations to also take into account. And then for the, the drought consideration, how we have water bans, that if I remember correctly, is a requirement of the MS4 permit, which is a state permit. I don't believe it's, it's a result of a lack of water resources. I believe it's just a piece of the compliance for the MS4 permit. And if I'm wrong, somebody please correct me, but that's how I understand it. Just to give you a little bit of information on the questions you had asked.
I think too, John, or I guess on the sewer, because I think that was another piece of it. Is Tom able to kind of speak to the sewer capacity?
Yes. Yeah, Christine, I'll, I'll respond to you and, and Thomas to you as well. We, we don't know each other, but I can promise you that the information that we were presenting truly isn't being presented in a disingenuous manner. I completely understand the, the concern. I have three young kids as well in, in the public school system here in Fairfield, so I, I completely understand the basis of the concern. But I'll, I'll address Christina's last comment and then just touch on the schools. One of the benefits of being involved on this project for six or seven years and having lots of discussions with town was that we were trying to do business and interested in a way to find a way to make this project come to, to life before the town even hired the third-party engineer AECom to study sewer capacity in the town. We anticipate in summary that our sewer use will take up at most 9% of the available, you know, identified capacity in AECom's study. The main reason, number one, is that our project was incorporated into their study. And when AECom discussed their findings, they mentioned two items, two numbers. The permitted flow that Westboro has with the regional wastewater treatment facility and actual flows. And actual flows were made up of two things. Literal actual flows metered today plus anticipated development. So our projects, you know, infrastructure use was anticipated in their project. So there, there's an argument that it could be 0% of the anticipated use. But if you say that that's unfair, you could argue that the actual numbers from live projects and the gallons per day that they produce would equal at most 9% of the identified available sewer capacity. And on the school question, again, totally, totally understood. It's, it's a fair concern. The data that we are providing is arguably the best comparable piece of data we could use, meaning a, it's, it's the same student generation yield from a very similar project, built in a very similar way, just a few miles down the road by, by the same company. And, and we feel strongly that that is a very good representation of, of what that data will be.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comments? I don't see any hands raised, so if you do have a question or a comment, please raise your hand or unmute and just get my attention. And whoever's sharing their screen, can you please stop sharing? Might give us a little few more faces on the screen.
John, it looks like there's a question.
All right, it looks like Marie. Marie, if you can state your name and address and then your question or, or comment, you should be able to unmute yourself. If you need help. We can do that, I guess. Jenny, I can't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm unable to unmute people now. It's, it's under their own control.
So Marie, if you can unmute, it's at the top of the screen. Doesn't seem like anything's changing. Marie, if you can send Jenny an email with your questions or we'll hopefully we'll be back in person and the weather will be better for our December 16th meeting. You can ask your question then. Or in the meantime, like I said, you can email Jenny with the question and we can pass it along.
Yeah, and my, the email is planning@westboroMA.gov.
Thank you, Jenny. All right, any other questions or comments from the public? I'm not seeing any. Anybody else seeing any?
No.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Any questions from the applicants?
No, thank you.
All right. So no questions are left, then I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing to the December 16th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. And Chris with the second. John, your vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
And Hazel has left, so she can't vote. So I am a yes. That is four to zero. So we, we will see you all on December 16th. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is planning department updates. Jenny, do you have any planning department updates?
The, on December 9th, I, I might have said this at the last meeting. I can't remember, but on December 9th, so next week, on Tuesday night at 6:00 PM, we do have a public information meeting on the East Main Street Corridor project, which is a proposed shared use path that will run along East Main Street from approximately the Hastings School down to Thomas Newton Drive. The project is something that's on the, the tip or the Transportation Improvement Program with the state. And it's being paid for, the design is being paid for through some mitigation funding from previous planning board decisions, along with some, some Chapter 90 funds through the DPW. And then the construction will be paid for completely by the state under the TIP program. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear, but it's a good example of, you know, where these mitigation funds go from the planning board.
Great.
Yeah, and that, that's really all I have.
Okay. Anybody have any reports from their other boards?
No, Sustainable Westboro meets next week, so maybe I'll have an update for our next meeting.
John, anything?
I think next week, Jenny, we have a meeting with zoning working group.
Yes.
And Chris, any updates?
Nope, no updates.
All right. So I'm on the capital expenditures planning committee. We have a meeting tomorrow. We have our last presentation, which is the fire department. So after that, we will have all of the capital projects presentations done. And we will be making our recommendations to the town manager for the capital expenditures, which will be coming from the free cash. So I will update you once we have a little bit more information on that, but that process is moving forward. We have meeting minutes from November 18th. Did everyone have a chance to look at these?
Yes.
And are there any edits or comments, questions? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2025 as written.
So moved.
All right, thank you, John. Thank you, Chris. John, your vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
And John Gelsuch is a yes, so that those minutes get approved 4-2-0. We have an upcoming meeting, December 16th. And unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thank you, John. John, your vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
John Gelsuch is a yes. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.